...to discuss the Ambulance Association becoming part of the town. The Ambulance Association is here tonight to talk about what they would like to see happen. We plan to have at least two to three more of these meetings. This is just the first one so that they can tell you what they're thinking. And you are welcome to come up and ask questions after they give their presentation, and they'll answer all your questions for you.
I will try.
Okay. All right, so it's all yours.
Introduce yourself, probably.
All right, my name is Jennifer Sayer. I am chief of Acton Rescue.
Peter Smith, fire chief of Acton Fire.
And Bill Catanze, the president of the Acton Ambulance Association.
Basically, tonight, as you see, we have a little staff-in matrix. I'm trying to do some staffing for the town of Acton because of the new information that just came out to us from the city of Sanford. And without further ado, we'll just start right off. Just a little brief history for us. The Acton Fire Department, a volunteer fire department in the western New York County, first established back in 1968. My dad was part of that. The Garrishes, there's a whole bunch of them back then, felt the need of having a department around here. Currently, we're staffed at 35 volunteer members. The Acton Ambulance Association, first established, got the ball rolling back in 1979, but they actually started their first calls 1980 at midnight, and it was a horrendous motor vehicle crash, started off with a bang. And they're currently comprised of 37 responders. But out of the 37, there's only 20 licensed personnel. And out of the 20 licensed personnel, we have six, like, real active, active responders that are pretty dedicated and-
The majority of the calls?
-to do the majority of the calls. Both services are about 100 percent volunteer, and we'll see this year between 325 to 400 calls combined. And this is an average, is everything you do, what you do is an average, is about eight calls a week. So the six people that are dedicated are pretty busy. Multiple calls a day are often observed, resulting in the average of 50 calls per active lic- oh, 50, yeah, responded per year. Each medical call takes an average of three to five hours. And that's, and again, that's an average. And why sometimes five hours? Because we do go to Portland sometimes, we have long calls, go to, we've been to Boston several times. And it's the paperwork afterwards, at the hospital, convert, cohercing with the doctors and all that stuff. Getting back, getting your truck back in service, and go home. It takes a long time. Thanks.
So the changes we've seen over the years, some of the perfect facts, 95 percent of main fire departments are comprised of volunteers. There used to be where the majority of the volunteers, they were farmers, they were stay-at-home moms, they were able to go on these calls during the day. Employers used to allow people to leave work to go on these calls. We don't have that anymore. But there's been a continued decline for the past five years. The lack of licensed personnel to staff ambulances, that's another fact that we have, basically just due to the licensing restrictions that come down, you know, there's more hours to put in. For the reasons, as I said, you've got increased training requirements, 160 hours for firefighters, 190 for basics, additional trainings for ALS, 48-plus hours for fresher training every three years for EMS license, continued yearly training, extended call times, so three to five hours. People don't have those three to five hours to give anymore. It's the, they just, with the economy, with the dual income households, they just don't have that time. Members committing to work, no longer working local, the economy, as I just said, working additional hours to make ends meet, lack of time to invest, continued advanced training, pumps, ladders, et cetera.
At this point, we have a little video I'd like to show. It was actually just recent. It's town of Limerick, I think it was last November, we kind of did our little matrix thing here, and all of a sudden we noticed this video, and it says, boy, this is really close to what we're already working for, so we just wanted to show the clip.
And it's literally a one-man fire department.
Last year, there was 200 rescue calls I went to, and a little over 100 fire calls.
He has several fire trucks in his shop and on his property, as his business is selling plows, parts, and fire equipment. But McLean is also a volunteer on the Limerick Fire Department.
The more calls you have, the more people you need. You know, it's exhausting some days to go run out the three calls.
He says a lot has changed in his 38 years helping his neighbors with increased training and calls, reducing the number of people willing and able to pitch in.
With 400 calls that we had this year, we only have, right now, four actual licensed medical people. Well, that's a lot of calls for four volunteers.
He says when folks are at work, there are even fewer people able to respond.
Sometimes we don't have anybody. There are certain days of the week where it's hard to rely on anybody. We compensate for that by listening for a tone, and if it's something critical, relying on the neighboring towns to come and assist.
To make sure someone shows up, Limerick and other small-town departments are turning to larger departments to provide services.
No, we can't keep going the way it is, because there was an instance a month ago where we didn't have any medical people in town, and we had three calls during that day, all of which Waterboro thankfully covered for us. But it's gotten to the point where we're relying on them way too much, and it's costing them a lot of money.
Most every fire department in Maine is called upon from time to time to help their neighbors in their time of need. Sometimes it's when a structure fires beyond their capability, or if they have two incidents going on in their town at the same time. It's known as a mutual aid agreement, and it's supposed to be reciprocal.
We have always had mutual aid agreements with our surrounding communities.
Waterboro Fire Chief Matthew Boers estimates 100 of the nearly 1,000 calls his department responded to last year were for help outside of his community.
And certainly it is an impact to our community, no question, that the taxpayers of Waterboro have taken the initiative to fund, to have adequate coverage.
It got to the point where he met with Limerick's chief to see if there was a way to lessen the burden.
What is that balance in the service that we're providing to be able to make it affordable to the resident?
Chief Boers is quick to point out that when Waterboro calls for assistance, the few folks Limerick can muster are always there to return the favor.
They're able to pull the truck together when we need them to, and they know. You know, it's, it means a lot to them, and we've respected the relationship we've had with them. But with the volume of calls increasing all the time, at some point it snaps, and that's going to be a terrible day when we just can't get a rescue to somebody.
Members of Limerick Fire and Rescue have been circulating a petition requesting residents vote on adding some per diem staffing.
We really don't have a choice out here, except we should put some per diem people on to offset that.
And while Steve McLean says paid members working dedicated shifts will not fix all their problems-
Essentially, it is regional out here, because none of these small towns can do it themselves.
He believes if each town does its part, they'll be better equipped to answer the call for help, no matter who's calling and from where. In Limerick, Tim Goff, NewsCenter.
But just to add on, add a little bit, Fire and McLean, over in Limerick, they already have a one-person working staff during the day over there, and they're still having troubles. And their call volume is the same, roughly closer to the same as ours.
Somebody called today, I don't know how active last year or this year.
Yeah, you need to come up to the microphone so they can hear it on the tape, because we're taping for the TV station, so anybody that wants to speak, please come up to the microphone.
I was going to do it at the end, but that's okay.
What's that, you want to answer at the end?
Yeah, we're going to have questions.
Okay, let them finish their presentation, and then we'll take questions after that.
They might answer some of the questions that people are going to ask.
Okay.
All right, for the last 46 years, Acton Fire, Acton Ambulance have been providing town back with fire rescue services and public assistance. But over the course of the past 10 years, Acton Fire, Acton Ambulance have been, both been met with a severe challenge of answering the calls to services with limited staffing. Acton Fire, Acton Ambulance, as well as neighboring towns in the area have been relying on mutual aid agreements, utilizing other services to fill our gaps, just like Limerick did. As of late, however, the utilization and leading by mutual aid by the surrounding towns has come to a head, often seeing numerous towns, multiple agencies, no response, defaulting back to the city of Sanford. This causes a 20-plus-minute delay in response for our rescue services not to include the travel time from wherever the given community service is responding from.
Fee for service, ah, fee for service. We had a York County Chiefs Association meeting just over a month or so ago, and Chief Benardi from the city of Sanford had made a presentation at that meeting. And his presentation was, as such, and I'll get into this, is a recent development given to the massive influx of calls for the service by out-of-town agencies that do not meet the parameters of the mutual aid agreement. That means, mutual aid agreement is, if we are on a call, another company will come out and cover our call. If they're out, we will go help cover their call. It does not mean we cannot get people, and our ambulance stays in the station, because there are not personnel to handle. That is technically in the agreements, it's out there for mutual aid agreement, it's not even agreement. They are basically covering and handling the calls of Acton. So in their thought process, it's happening more and more, and due to a neighbor in town, which is hurting worse than us, they've already gone to actually this fee structure. And so the city of Sanford and the town of Milton have announced to the surrounding communities they'd be starting a charge to the towns and their respective departments to which they respond, $2,000 for every time they have to send a rescue to respond to a call for the specific towns that is unable to get a crew together to respond to the call themselves. That means anytime that Sanford comes out now, because our ambulance or local ambulance can't get out of the building, it's a $2,000 bill. On top of that, they charge for the billing of the patient to come out here, because it's costing the city of Sanford a lot of money and time, and they're maxed out with their own calls, they just can't keep coming out. So to try to make up for that, this cost factor's coming out in the future. They're looking, it's all in talk right now, but looking, perhaps staffing another whole ambulance, this is going to be the case, to come out to all these communities. And no matter what, we're still relying on ALS, because we have a lot of ENTs, and we, and there's a lot of advanced life support calls, so it's $275 per call, every time Sanford comes out, hops on our rigs, and gives higher-level care.
So what that means with the $2,000 per call that Sanford will charge is, we did a quick estimate, if Acton Ambulance Association is not able to get our ambulance out 16 times, that will be expensive $32,000, and that'll break us. We do not have the money to fall back on that. So if you look at, if Acton Ambulance Association just continues responding, because we go bankrupt, at 200 calls a year, you're looking at expensive $400,000 in Sanford. Additionally, the $275 fee from paramedic response to the city of Sanford, which is a fairly standard fee that Acton Ambulance Association's already paid.
And on, on top of that, oh, at this point, I've talked to Chief Benardi in the negotiations, they're not willing to charge Acton at this point. However, the deadline is January, July 1st, the new budget season, so they're trying to give us as much time as we can to budget appropriately, to whatever's going to occur. However, at this point, a neighbor in town, because of the lack of being able to get their ambulance out of the door, they have already started billing, and started November 1st, so the town of Lebanon is already getting this cost against them already. But as long as we're due diligent, we're doing the best we can, we're still trying to get the truck out, they're going to hold off until July 1st, unless we're just not able to get out. It is at this juncture in time, inevitable the expenses will be occurring, no matter if it's from Sanford, us, private ambulance services coming in, you know, we're just trying to move forward. The vulnerability of calls, lack of membership, and particularly the lack of licensed responders to be able to staff the ambulance at all hours of the day, have finally reached a point outside of the department's ability, the resource and mandatory response effectively. You know, we worked really hard, trying to say, well, when's our prime call? Well, there is no prime call time. It changes all the time. This year it could be morning, next year it could be night, the next year it could be during the day. There's no prime time when calling in. So we're trying to do diligence, try to do the right thing, we're trying to make our town very active, progressive, go forward on our first thing. So Acton Fire and Acton Ambulance Association, acknowledging unfortunate burden falls upon the town and the cities, there's no denying that money will be spent. There's no denying, we're not denying that at all, and, you know, the association's on a phenomenal drop. 34 years of basically tax-free money, some prime associations, I've got to commend them thanks. It just helps facilitate that the money is expanded to ensure that the town of Acton, its citizens, commuters, and patrons receive the best quality of services possible, and the lowest financial impact these-
So what our proposal basically is, Acton Fire, Acton Ambulance Association, proposed to the town of Acton, our solution to combat the moving fees from out-of-town services, the occasional long delays being observed, the response of the ambulance, and getting qualified licensed personnel and team in the pragmatic staffing, we request to explore, uniting both the agencies under one department, as Acton Fire Rescue, and provide 24/7 staffing, per diem staffing of two firefighter/ENT licensed responders. Our preliminary plans for staffing are as follows. When you see these, please keep in mind that this does not incorporate revenue earned, revenue earned from billing, from fundraising, grants.
I know these are kind of hard to see, but this is the, what we received from the treasurers. We had no way to enlarge or anything, we scammed it in, and we put it in. Just soup to nuts, we have additional information apps afterwards, but soup to nuts for, as you look to the right, impact for a $180, $180,000 value, would be like a $90 to $142 increase in damage. You know, the hourly rate that's left and shows the impact of what it would be, and, you know, we have a lot of work to do. This is very, very, very preliminary. We're just getting started on this. Again, we got the unfortunate news from Sanford. This was not our goal, this was not how we was going to go, but we kind of got found it. So we have a lot of work to do, but we're doing the work in due diligence to try to go forward. Again, it's just another maintenance. Well, as I stated before, how much would this cost me as a taxpayer? I'm a taxpayer as well. On an average of $180,000 a home, your estimated increase seen yearly tax would be $90, $260. I'd be happy to pay that, so I can stay home and not burn my gas, and spend time with my children, my family. I'd pay a lot more than that to, you know-
Like I said, a person's life is worth more than that.
Exactly. I mean, our goal is to be out here a citizen, but they have lives, they have jobs, they, we don't have the people that we used to have, we just cannot have it for a living.
And one thing we discussed about those numbers, those numbers right there actually are, it's almost less than a lot of people pay enough for their cellphone. So for you to have, I'm going to say almost guaranteed, if we're on the call, we'll have to call mutual aid then, but you can almost guarantee an ambulance response immediately for less than a cellphone bill per month, I'd pay that too.
Well, I can add on that, because-
And the proportion adds too, the population has been decreasing every year.
Sir, let him finish his presentation, and we'll let everybody talk, and you need to come to the microphone and talk, so it'll be on the tape, okay?
So I'm kind of a toy boy kind of guy. I don't have internet, I keep a TV, I don't have DISH, so that's a lot of money that I choose not to spend. I don't care, I have it, so this is really inexpensive money for me, for my own, myself, my daughter, my family that lives in Acton, and all my friends and all my patrons.
So why Acton? Well, Acton geographically sits in a very popular location. That will break the abilities of our services, not only to our community, to our neighboring towns, to also face similar issues when it comes to staffing and answering calls. This will further increase the call volume of Acton Fire Rescue, in turn, increasing revenue seen through billing. We're very fortunate to have the equipment facilities to go about looking at this proposal. In addition to the location of the station of the geographic area, our buildings are more modern and closer to building code in comparison to surrounding communities. This will allow for habitation by staffing crews with minimal costs to upgrade, and will allow for further continued expansion of the department and the services it can provide.
And again, that's just the locals, because we, I think there's three towns left in York County that doesn't have any kind of staffing, paid staffing, us, Shapley, and Lebanon, I believe, and Newfield. The pros of staffing, I mean, there's tons and tons and tons, but we're just trying to hit on, you know, the few things, and, you know, cross-train crews that can respond is both fire and EMS, it's right here, right in town. We're not relying on other towns coming up, we're not getting that extra training, that extra bonding, the fast response time for both fire and EMS. I mean, that, to me alone, as we talk, is, and this, there's patrons out here that's had some tremendous, long response time to get EMS to their residents, and we see it as unacceptable. However, again, we are doing the best that we can for what we have. So that, that alone is A number one. More experienced crews by, more experienced crews is because we're running more, we're getting the experience, we're knowing the equipment better, we're, the people that, you know, are partial, you know, they do the best they can, we get a dozen calls out in a year, six calls out in a year, they're not as efficient, they're not as experienced, you know, they, they get a waste, not waste, they take time to look for stuff, you know, if, you know, if they're there working, staffing, they'll know where stuff is with their eyes closed. Consistent and aggressive maintenance on the equipment and the buildings, just the maintenance alone would be very helpful. We have a lot of guys, again, volunteers, do the best they can to keep our equipment up to snuff. Few slides down, barrel labor standards. Barrel labor standards are not nice people. They don't care what they say or what they do. If you're not up to snuff, up to standard, they're going to ham you with a large bill. Next town over this way, they just got visited by the barrel labor stand, and they got a healthy little fine, and they're not nice people, you know, just leave that. Community outreach programs, you know, better compliance with main, better public access, you know, people will be at the station. I don't know how many times people come and knock on the door. Well, this, it's not a man's station, it's a volunteer station. However, the town of Acton, we do very well, people up there, you know, they're self-motivated, they're up there, and, you know, it's part-time, but, you know, how nice would it be if you had some questions, concerns, comments, hey, what about my smoke detectors, my fire extinguish, what I do, you know, there's people there to talk to these people and give them some And progressive training for the crews on the equipment, you know, they're there, they're training, and if you're having somebody up there, and Sean here just shows up and says, geez, you know what, I'm not very good with that, we got people on staff that can handle it, instead of waiting for a meeting night, month three, down the road, we're not scheduled, you know, if he's not comfortable, we're getting this guy up to snuff, and we're going forward. You know, we want to be very proficient and expeditions. The town of Acton's always been top of the line, we've always been very good on trying to do the right thing for the future. Back a few slides before is the facility. We did a very good job, thanks to Chief Smith over there, on creating a nice public safety building, trying to foresight the future. We're there, we're already there, so it's not going to cost a lot, very minimal money to make it so it's staffable. Unlike Shapley or Lebanon, I was talking to Lebanon chief tonight, she's doing the same thing tonight, trying to get some monies over there, because they'd be in WAC, but they don't have the facility, so it's going to be costing them even more money.
So here's some alternate solutions that we researched. Private rescue service estimated $400, $600,000. This, this is a base, you know, they have other things they will tack on. If they're not getting some revenue in, they may even charge us more, because they're not getting their money back. Fees for city of Sanford rescue, continued response, $400,000 if the ambulance can no longer respond. And that's for ambulance services only, the private rescue is for ambulance services only, and regionalizing with surrounding volunteer community, communities for ambulance services only would be a long-term plan, but there's no, there's been no real talk done on that, and that's not an immediate course of action, that'll probably take two years plus. What we're proposing would, would be fire and ambulance calls, we would have both able to respond immediately, instead of just having the ambulance services covered for this amount right here.
That kind of concludes our presentation. I know it's short and sweet, it's very preliminary, I can't say that enough, we're just getting started here, but as you can see, we've, in-house, we've already made the unity of the EMS and the fire, we've done that. It's no offense, that's about it. So the two patches that used to be are one now, we're already wearing the one single patch, and this is where we stand right now. I guess, just for my own sake, I'm just going to throw out, how many people out here still volunteer to do things? Show your hands, don't be scared. Nice. How many people, not including Fire Rescue, are still out here volunteering, doing things? Keep your hands up, if you could, please, I got one, two, three, four. Beautiful. How many people out here of dropping your families, getting up in the middle of the night, leaving your Christmas parties, leaving your ballgames, going out in the worst weather, doing all that stuff? How, how many we have out there? You do? What do you do, sir?
We have one for us, and I'm going to make you an honorary member of the tribe. Thank you very much.
But this is where we stand, you know, the volunteerism just isn't out there anymore. It's a lot, a lot, a lot of hours. Questions, I guess?
Okay, the floor's open to questions, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and we have until seven o'clock, we have a very busy selectmen's meeting at seven o'clock, so we'll have to shut the questions down at seven.
My name is Percival O'Hore, I live down on Milton Mills Road. I'm very familiar with these problems. I've been involved in the fire service since I was 18 years old. Both volunteer, I spent a year and a half as a full-time firefighter in Norman, Oklahoma. We moved back here from Arizona. We lived in the county 40 miles west of the outskirts of Phoenix. We had a fire department that was sponsored by the nuclear power plant. They said they'd do it for two years, and in the meantime, we better get our act together and do something. At the end of two years, they shut off the financing, and they closed the department down. We had two groups, one that wanted a volunteer department, and one that I was involved with, I said, forget volunteers, you need a full-time crew, and then you can back 'em up with volunteers. We had, when we finally started the department, we had six full-time people, and then we had 19 volunteers. My wife and I gave them an acre of land to build a fire station on. We started in February, we figured it would take six months to get the station built, so they used our spare bedroom with an outside entrance, and we built a garage out of two 40-foot containers with a roof over them, they were 32 feet apart. It took two and a half years to get the station built. But we, it was a unique situation in that we covered 250 square miles and 17 miles of I-10. We had, the last year, before they, when they moved into the station, we had 600 calls, and probably 85 percent of them were medical. If the state of Maine and the federal government had their way, there would be no volunteer departments. And they're coming to that faster and faster. If you have somebody come and say they want to join your department, they've still got to get 160 or 180 hours of training before they can go on the fire ground. If you're holding down a full-time job, how do you do that? So the sooner the town of Acton accepts the fact that this has got to happen at some point, and maybe the best thing to do would be to combine with other towns and have a regional thing. regional thing, but you, something has to be done, and the fact that Sanford has said, we can't provide you with the service for nothing anymore, so it's gonna cost you two thousand dollars a run.
Right, and what they've also said is if that two thousand dollars is not paid, they're not coming out. So you may not get any meals at all, you may not get your house taken care of if there's a fire, they, they've already said this, so...
So it behooves us to move ahead, figure out what is the best for the town of Acton. And like you said, if it costs us even two hundred dollars on your taxes, it's a bargain. Especially when you have to take into account, the first four minutes of a medical call is vital. The quicker you get on the scene and start doing something for this person, especially if it's a heart attack, the, the more chance you stand of the person surviving. So you...
Right, and right now, as a volunteer department, say for example, um, I'm available, I'm at home, I'm already dressed, um, you know, I'm ready to run out that door, perfect weather, where I don't have to scrape the snow off my truck, it's still gonna take me five minutes to get to the station, and another ten to fifteen to get up on the ridge. So best-case scenario, you're still looking at fifteen, twenty minutes on a volunteer department.
So you, it, it's time that we looked and said, okay, the best thing for the town is let's put together a full-time department.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Leslie Dennis, I live over on Dennis Lane. I mean, I have all respect for you guys and the volunteers and everything, what you do, and I understand your hands are tied with the courses that they make you go through nowadays, and the licenses and all this stuff, but I mean, the way things are going today, our population is getting more elderly all the time. Response time, like he said, is critical. For two hundred dollars, or even three hundred dollars, a person's life is priceless, you know, for time-wise. So this town needs to get on the ball and get something rolling that will take care of the people of the town. Even if we have to combine it with other towns, at least have the full-time staff that can, when a call comes in, can go out and take care of the call. Not, like she said, come from home, clean your vehicle off, then you're taking the chance that your vehicle's not, it's gonna break down on your way there, and then you gotta try to find other people to come? I mean, I, I've talked to you, you know what happened with me a few months ago? My wife is still in the hospital to this day because of complications and everything. And this modern age, that shouldn't happen. I mean, people gotta realize, they gotta get out and they gotta spend their little money to have it today. They can't go like they were twenty-five years ago, or, you know, the times have changed. You know, our population every year is getting more elderly, it's not like it was twenty years ago.
I captured up to ya.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there, you know? Every day we're getting older and older. But I mean, you guys do have my full support and backing to have something, do something like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a...
I'm Harold Smith, and, um, I've been on the Acton Fire Department since nineteen seventy-seven, and the rescue since nineteen eighty when they first formed. And I thought I'd just talk a little bit about, in two thousand and two, we had a, a donation that was given to us by a citizen that allowed us to buy a bunch of training equipment, and also we did some part-time staffing. And, uh, so the way that it worked was, we, um, it was per diem, it was our own folks, and we would pay them to be at the station, one or two people. Obviously, it wasn't twenty-four seven, but from what I recollect, uh, during those, that one year that we did that, um, when we didn't have the staffing there, our average response time to get the ambulance on the road, I think, was thirteen minutes. Obviously, when somebody was there, the ambulance got on the road within a minute, so there was a big difference there. But other things that we found that happened that year that I, I mean, I could've predicted that, but what I found that I couldn't predict was what we found was, when we get any ambulance call, we would get more of the volunteers that could actually come to the scene, because here's, here's the situation. Maybe, um, I'm getting ready to go to work, and I gotta leave to go to work in an hour and a half, I don't have three hours to commit to going to the call, but I can go to the scene and I can help out, help trans, you know, help, uh, carry the person out to the ambulance, that kinda stuff, 'cause I knew the two people that were staffing the ambulance that day was gonna do the call for me. So we got more people that, that responded to the call, and we did find that, that people's, um, especially the relatively new EMTs, that didn't have a chance to get a lot of experience, their confidence was better, um, because they would go to the station and, uh, prepare and, and make sure that everything was, was ready to go, and they were answering more calls. So it was kind of a win-win situation, um, all the way around, and I just wanted to report on, you know, we, we sort of sampled what we're proposing here, and I didn't, you know, from what I recall, back in two thousand and two, I didn't see any negative effects of any of that. And then, like I said, it was a one-year donation, when it went away, we went back to trying to answer the calls as best we could, uh, but the difference is, in nineteen eighty, when we went into service that first year, we didn't, um, we were averaging about fifty ambulance calls a year. And we could only provide services to the basic EMT level. So that meant me, back then, back then the EMT course was a hundred and twenty hours, not a hundred and, what is it, eighty or ninety now?
Ninety.
And that was the highest that we went. Today, uh, we try to provide a paramedic-level service, the citizens, I think, expect paramedic-level service, and, uh, essentially, to be a paramedic these days, you need to have an associate's degree in paramedicine. And so all of the paramedics that I know that volunteer in the community that they live in, all work full-time someplace else, with the exception of Wendy Elliott in Newfield, she's strictly a volunteer, always has been, she's a teacher now. But it's because you can't afford a two-year time commitment to get your license and strictly volunteer, but if you do it as a career, you can. And so these people do it as a career, and they volunteer as best they can. So essentially, if you were a roofer, you would roof all day, you would go home, at two o'clock in the morning, your neighbor would call up and say, come help me shingle my roof for three hours, you'd go do it for free, and then at six o'clock the next morning, you'd go back to being a roofer again, in a, in a paid, in a paid thing. Now, these people that are doing it aren't complaining, but essentially, that, that's what we're asking them to do. And so when the day comes when they say, you know what, I just need to have a good night's sleep because I've just got off from a twenty-four-hour shift, and I gotta go do another twenty-four-hour shift tomorrow, you can't blame them. Uh, like I said, back in nineteen eighty, when it was fifty calls a year, I was answering one call a week with the ambulance, I made just about every call back then. And I certainly can't make every call these days, nor do I even try anymore, so. But anyhow, I just wanted to share a little of the history and, and, um...
Just to touch on what Harold said, you said thirteen minutes back in two thousand and one?
I think so.
Right now, the majority of our calls, even at the volunteer level that we still have, the majority were getting out in between nine to eighteen minutes. That's the lowest I could break it down, when they have the majors online where I can click and get our information, was nine to eighteen minutes. So, um, and that's from the time the tone goes out and we get the page until the ambulance rolls out of the station, nine to eighteen minutes. The other thing I wanted to touch on that Harold mentioned was back in two thousand and one, um, I was chief back then also, and the other thing that we had noticed was there were more residents calling for service because they were more familiar with us having, um, occasional people on staff. So, you know, that kind of bumped up the budget a little bit. So, you know, the residents in Acton here find out, you know, yes, we have a staff now, that revenue coming in, the, the following year's not gonna, you know, change into the first year, the following year, you know, it may offset the costs and bring that cost down. Just keep that in mind, that's, that's a real good thing right there.
Right now, as an association, we are still making a small profit, we're not paying the volunteers, but we're maintaining our equipment, and there's still some money in the coffers. We've also got a fund where we're saving for new ambulance, and there's an amount of money in there. Now, should this unification take place, that will all go into the town and hopefully be maintained as, you know, an ambulance fund. But right now, we get no money from the town, the only thing we get is our billing and fundraisers.
And that's what needs to change.
And that's what needs to change. Well, since I've been president of the association, we've been trying to get two volunteers from the community to join the board, and we've had no luck. We've advertised on the public TV, so volunteerism is not what it used to be.
No, because people gotta make a living today, it's not like it was years ago. Cost of everything is, is skyrocketing, people gotta take care of their families, they don't have the time to volunteer anymore.
Okay, is there anybody else that has any questions? Okay, right now, we have a committee that is the, uh, fire chief, the rescue chief, Bill Catanze, Ed Walsh is sitting on it, and Dick Neal, is there anybody else? Okay. Um, I have put a call into the Shapley Selectmen, and they meet every week or every two weeks?
Every week.
Every week. And we will have more hearings and more discussions before, um, we decide, you know, how it's gonna look on the warrant for June. I contacted the Shapley Selectmen, they are willing to sit down and talk. No promises have been made on either side, but we've worked very well with them, with the deputy sheriff, so it's our hope that it may be a possibility that we can work this out with Shapley, because they're in the same situation as us, they're not responding to their calls as much as they used to. They have a budget now for their ambulance, and Michelle Remney, who's our treasurer, is also the Shapley treasurer, when they were answering their calls, they were more than, uh, making enough money to cover the cost that the town was getting. So the town initially started putting the money out, and then the money was coming in from the ambulance calls, and it evened out. So we will look into that too, and then if, if they are interested, possibly have Selectmen and their fire chief join your committee, uh, for further negotiations, and we'll have that information for the next public hearing, which will be after the first of the year. You guys have any others? No? Okay, if there's no more questions, uh, make a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
All in favor?